This is the Londonderry Town Council meeting for Monday, June sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
And we will open public comment.
Hi, Tara Miles. I'm good, Ron. How are you doing?
Good, good.
Eleven Lancaster Drive, Londonderry. I'm here today to ask for your help. I was able to attend the special or emergency, depending on whom you speak with, library meeting on Saturday. What a circus it was. It's very clear that they need resources to help them manage their meetings, understand the resources that they have in our community, understand the laws that they are required to follow, understand just really good meeting hygiene in practice. You know, across the meeting, there were several heated moments. In fact, at one stage, the police were called. And that was on the basis that someone spoke up when they went against the rules of decorum, they said. Employees were lambasted in front of the public and told to hide things that were illegal and being called out, that it should have gone to the director first and not be made light in public. Specifically, this was said around the twelve-minute meeting mark. Our town employees, specifically the director, Erin Colleen, and in reference, a number of other librarians, were spoken to poorly or spoken of poorly in a way that does not, it doesn't work for our town, it doesn't work for our community. They're not holding the decorum. I've seen incredibly difficult meetings in this chamber where folks from the community come in and they come after you guys, but you hold yourselves together and you treat everyone with respect. I think back to the meetings about Bo. And our firefighters came and they stood at this podium and they spoke and they were upset with you, but you cheered them with respect. You didn't speak poorly to them. And you manage your meetings well. I might not agree with every decision you guys have or your personal views, and frankly, I don't agree with some of the library members' personal or library trustee board members' personal views either. But it's not about that. It's about really making sure that our community operates effectively, that we're supporting the employees of our community, that we're using the investments we make in things like technology to ensure that our community has access to information. There were approximately, and this is just a rough number, fifteen to twenty different printed-out pages for the community to review at that session, all of which were at one stage in a digital format, but they're not on the website. The rules, policies, and procedures that they follow are not on the website. And I plan on trying to do all my own research and look into it because they've got my attention now about the laws that they have to follow and things like that, but they don't even know them. And it's not for lack of trying and it's not for lack of heart. While I disagree a lot with Liz and Jan on some of the things that they think and the ways that they think, I could see in my little heart of hearts at that meeting that they care about our community and they want to do what's right, and they're just not equipped. They need to know to be better prepared. They need the resources from folks like you all who have been on committees and boards and know what you're doing. They need that advice. We should be employing, you know, the Roberts method or things like that. And I know you don't have control over everything there. They're elected officials. We have control to offer them help. We can bring in the town attorney, who the town pays for, to ensure that we're not opening ourselves up to legal implications or lawsuits. Specifically, there was illegal activity that was discussed around a check. Now, frankly, nobody should write themselves a check from a checkbook that they own, but it all makes sense, right? She spent twenty bucks on staples because of miscommunication. She wrote herself a check, but it's illegal. And they didn't know that, and they weren't able to feel that. So I'm just asking here today, and I'll love you and leave you, that, you know, Dan, I know that you're their liaison. If you could maybe pull in some resources, give them some guidance, maybe speak with the school committee and the superintendent, because those folks operate in a fairly similar way, right? The superintendent is hired. The school committee is elected by us, but we need decorum. I voted for folks on that board. Those people were consistently interrupted while making a point because two folks disagreed with it. But that's my vote speaking, and I'm happy for everyone else to have their votes and for those folks on the board to speak what they want and need, but we need to get stuff done. And it's not happening because we don't have the operational rigor there. So I'm asking, please, give them resources and IT to get stuff digitized, to allow them to pull things up quickly. Get their stuff on the website for our community. I'm asking that you give them access, if they don't already have it, or make it very clear that it's available, to our town attorney to make sure that they know that they're operating within the laws. And I'm asking for all of you to give your expertise to them, to coach them. And maybe it's not the right role as chair or whatever for some of these folks, and I think they see it too a little bit. There are other folks on that board who might be better suited, just based on what I observed at that meeting. That's up to them. But we can't wait until March to make those changes. We need to come together as a community and support people that need help. And sometimes that looks like looking in at ourselves and giving them our skills. So I'm just asking for that. I hope that maybe our meetings can go back to two hours and that we can make decisions and we can make good decisions. We're never going to stop people from going in there and seeing their piece from the public, but we can have decorum for ourselves as community leaders. So that's all. I appreciate you and thank you very much.
I'll ask the town manager if he can lend any assistance to the library or if there's anything we can do to help them, alright?
Yeah, I think it would be very welcome. Thank you guys so much. Have a great night.
Thank you.
I just want to respond to that, okay? Because I was going to give this in my liaison report. We've all gotten an email from our town manager regarding the concerns of some of the board of trustees that they have. Our town manager was very good about pulling our resources in-house here. He pulled off HR, you know, two people from HR, two people from finance, and got information for them. And I'm sure that our town manager can speak more to it. He's done a marvelous job as far as reaching out to them and, you know, helping them, trying to guide them in the right direction, so.
Good, sir?
You're good?
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Robichek, thirteen Clover Lane. I'm not going to make this a habit. It's probably my third and lasts for at least a month or so. But I want to be clear that I'm speaking as a private citizen and taxpayer, not as a member of any committee or board that I may be appointed to. But I'm here tonight to address one of the most hot topics of the day, housing in New Hampshire and more specifically, Londonderry, and its impact on our town and the quality of life in this town. In the most recent few years, approximately two thousand three hundred thirty-seven housing units have been approved in progress, comma, in progress or completed in Londonderry. This includes single-family homes, condos, two-family units, and multifamily units. Some of them are three- to four-story buildings. Some have been built and some under construction. I have them listed. I have a list of them, but I'm not going to read them. For reference, if you're interested, if the time allows, I can do it. The most recent U.S. Census Bureau data show, from July one twenty-three, describes Londonderry as having an estimated population of twenty-six thousand seven hundred people. Per the U.S. Census data, Londonderry is approximately two-point-seven-three persons per household, so you can argue per unit or per household. For the sake of this exercise, if we assume two-point-oh persons per household since two thousand twenty-three, with two thousand three hundred thirty-seven new housing units approved or built or under construction, this calculates the new population in Londonderry approaching four thousand six hundred seventy-plus additional people at the time of completion of these units. This is similar to adding the entire population of Candia or Brentwood, New Hampshire, to our town in a matter of four to five, six years, okay? Adding this number to the two thousand twenty-three population numbers, we get approximately thirty-one thousand three hundred eighty people, roughly. This is about what our town council has said in the recent past that this town can accommodate. We heard an upper limit of about thirty-two thousand at the May fifth, two thousand twenty-five town council meeting. Folks, we're here now. We're going to be here in a year. We're here now. We're thirty-two thousand when these get occupied. At this rapid rate of development, we need to slow this process down. We need to take a break, a pause, a temporary moratorium, and determine the effects of all this building on our traffic, infrastructure, and necessary support services. This level of growth has surpassed this town's ability to support in its current structure. This underscores the urgent need to update our current PUD ordinance, our development agreements, the need for applications of impact fees to mitigate the effects of this level of development on the taxpayers in town. The issue of impact fees is an important one, and it's not just a few people in town, as some have said, that are calling for this. There's widespread support for this. Traffic is also a major issue that needs to be addressed, but not on a costly town-wide traffic study, but more in a focused approach addressing key areas of town, we call them hotspots in my business, which are currently impacted or will be impacted by future development. Just quickly, in terms of this twenty-three-hundred-some units, active permits under construction, three hundred eighty. Recent occupancy permits, I'm sorry, two hundred thirty-six since January twenty twenty-four. Nineteen fifty-seven remaining approved to be built in the near future. Thank you. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Bob, I just want to say one thing. I totally one-thousand percent agree with everything you say. And I have, as one councillor, and I can only speak for myself, have been trying to work with the town manager to get the PUD up for discussion. I've been doing it since April. It just keeps rolling down further and further out. And the impact fees, at least those two things, because it is. We need to do a lot more things to be able to grow and grow healthy and grow smart as opposed to just, quick, get everything built, get everything built. And we really do. And I just want to say thank you for showing up and saying it because it just echoes with, I can't tell you how many phone calls and emails I get on a weekly basis about this sort of stuff. And I'm hoping that very soon, the town manager will have it on the agenda to address the council so that we can address these subject matters and understand the scope of it and be able to take steps forward as opposed to look like we're just kicking it down the road.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Paul is not being kicked down the road. It's going to be on the agenda on July seventh.
Are both of them?
Both of them.
Okay, well, everybody knows that now.
Well, anyway, thank you for the time.
Thank you, Bob.
Thank you.
Chairman Dunn, I just wanted to clarify. Actually, Chairman Dunn wanted it on for tonight. It's not his fault. It was my fault that I got pushed to the seventh for a couple of reasons. I want to have draft motions available for you so you can act and it doesn't keep rolling on. And also to move this process forward, to talk about impact fees. Kelly's going to be here. I'm going to be on vacation that day, but those items are going to be there with draft motions for you to act so we can move the process forward on both of those. And again, not the chairman's fault because he wanted it on for today. We got the agenda a little bit more quickly because again, I want to allow more time for folks to digest all of that. So he tried to move it faster, so I'm the one who slowed it down a little bit there, just so you know.
So town manager and town council chair, I appreciate you doing that. I sincerely do because I think it's very important that we keep moving this forward. Thank you.
Anyone else with public comment?
Christine Perez, five Wesley Drive. I'm here as a citizen, a resident, Christine Perez. First of all, welcome. It's so nice to have a very experienced town manager. I'm excited. But I was extremely disappointed, but not at all surprised, by the statements made by councillor Faber at the last June eleventh planning board meeting. When discussing impact fees at the end of the meeting, and I urge everyone to listen to the end of the meeting, in question councillor Faber stated, quote, "I don't know that there is a consensus on it. Just because one councillor mentions it at a meeting doesn't mean necessarily we need to do something." Later, he said, "Just because one councillor gets a couple of people to mention it in public comment doesn't mean the town is screaming for it." First, I personally want to mention impact fees. I personally mentioned impact fees before one councillor was elected to the town council. And thank you, former Londonderry State Representative Betsy McKinney, for your very insightful letter about impact fees and how they contributed three hundred and ninety-two thousands towards building the library, five hundred and ninety-two thousand for high school project, one million seven hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in three years towards West Fire District and other projects. So we had impact fees from nineteen eighty-three to two thousand thirteen. So the town messed up in two thousand thirteen. They were sued. So who decided not to use them anymore because of that and why? Was it because we had an inexperienced leadership at that time? These comments by councillor Faber appear to be self-serving. Remember, this is your councillor who used his title as a town councillor without permission from any of you or you to push a personal agenda to the four hundred members of the state legislature. He had to be asked twice by Rockingham County leadership to withdraw and correct his statement. As former councillor Farrell stated at public comment a few months ago, "Be careful who you vote for," and this will be continued. Thank you.
Thank you, Christine. Anyone else with public comment?
Hello, sir?
Hey, John Farrell, four Hancock Drive. I do love how my name gets brought up all the time, so thanks for that. So hey, recently, we had Memorial Day. A number of us attended the parade, saw everybody there. We had D-Day. I don't know if you know this, but five hundred and fifty thousand people in the Battle of Normandy either died, wounded, or missing in action. Two hundred and thirty thousand of those were Allied troops. That was earlier this month. And then we had the retirement of flags over on June fourteenth, over here at the Legion. So I've had a few people, even one person said it here in the room tonight. For twenty years, the town council had a moment of silence for the, for those who served us, those who serve as the first responders. The Legion just had a luncheon for those. And I think it's, I know it's a hundred percent oversight, but for twenty years, these people who gave up their lives so that we can have these meetings in this government we have, I would ask you to please consider reinstating the moment of silence and paying respect to those folks.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Anyone else with public comment?
This is to our town manager. I want to thank our town manager for the open lines of communication he has provided these past two weeks. Last week, the council was asked if they knew whether public notices were being posted. Sorry to say, we all had a deer-in-the-headlights look and couldn't answer the question. The change was done prior to the town manager, Sean Mahollen, coming on board. I know the town manager can do things, but keeping the board informed, I believe, is important. Thank you for the weekly reports, the updates, all right? What's transpired during the week, what you're looking to improve on our community. And on Friday at five-fifty, I don't know when this guy ever stops working, but at five-fifty, I received an email from the town manager informing us what steps he took and the decision he made regarding the legal notices being posted. It's not uncommon to get emails early in the morning, during the day, or evening from him. I, as one councillor, would like to thank you for jumping right in and tackling the many issues that need to be addressed for the town of Londonderry. Thank you.
With that, I will close public comment. Next is board appointments. We have appointment of CIP members. In accordance with section five-point-five of the town charter, the town council must appoint the members to the Capital Improvements Program, CIP Committee. The appointments are town council representative, Dead Paul; school board representative, Bob Slater; budget committee representative, Sarah Meyer; planning board representatives, Art Rugg and Lynn Wiles. Any questions from the council? I will accept the motion to approve these appointments. Moved by Dan. Second. Second by Ted. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes in affirmative. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, an application for building the permit of a class-six road in accordance with the Hampshire RSA six-seven-four, colon, forty-one. That item has been postponed to a future meeting. New business. I'm going to allow Bob Slater to come up. He wanted to address the council with some issues from the school board. And is Bob?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, council. Great to see you all. Mr. Town Manager, welcome.
Sure.
And Assistant Town Manager. I met with the chairman roughly a month ago. We're going to try to meet monthly, at least bi-monthly, just to kind of go over stuff schools are doing and that, so if there's anything concerning on the town side or school side, we can pass it along to you folks. So I was here quite a while ago, and what I'm here tonight is possibly to come up with a solution for our district office. The school board thought we had a good plan back in March to take care of full-day kindergarten needs as well as district office to go into some empty school space for a price tag of about nine million dollars. In year three, with all the cost savings, it was going to be cash positive to our taxpayers in year three of a fifteen-year bond, and unfortunately, we didn't get the sixty percent. We got fifty-seven percent. So here we are today with a dilemma because we don't know what's going to happen with full-day kindergarten or when. We haven't even discussed it yet. The superintendent's having some roundtable with parents and that, but the school board has not discussed it to this point. So what I was looking at, and with only two years after this year, our lease is up. We have a ten-year lease. We're in year seven this year, or year eight. So we would have to start renegotiations probably next year to get additional time at a cost of two hundred to two hundred and forty thousand per year for office space. I was in here approximately seven years ago, eight years ago now, when I got involved on the school side to try to build next door with the old building. And the town was gracious enough then to have some additional funding to help fund it of upwards of two million for a ten-year interest-free loan. But at that point, the school board in place did not want to entertain that because they had just entered into this lease. So I then got elected, and then we came back four years ago with a two-story addition to Town Hall at just under five million with some space for the town as well built into that. And again, we got fifty-two percent vote, needed sixty percent. So that was the first time here, and then we just failed with the kindergarten and that in March. And I get it, and the people spoke. So what I'm looking at to bring to my colleagues is possibly looking next door again for another go-around with a one-story building, about six thousand square feet. We can extend it out about five feet wider, five feet longer from what we had looked at four years ago. Now, you don't need stairwells, you don't need elevator, and if we design it, and the reason for coming to you folks is we probably got to spend about fifteen thousand. We have a full set of plans for the two-story building that we had developed back four, five years ago. So we would need the architect to relay out a one-story building and be able to put it out to bid for accurate pricing. So we've got a number of about fifteen thousand. The superintendent and the business manager have been working on this, so I can bring it back to the board and see what we want to do. But you folks are number one, as I came to you the first time and the council worked with us. So I don't want to get into a situation where we have nothing to look for and then we're renegotiating the lease. So what I'm asking you folks is, would you entertain us looking at building a one-story building? It would match this building. We would have it approved through you folks, of course, and the town manager would get the right people to look at it and make it look just like Town Hall. And that way, we could spend a little bit of money to get drawings to forty percent so we could get a GMP and see where it comes in. We're hoping it's between two-point-three and two-point-five.
Bob, for the public, would you just explain the cost savings that would save the taxpayer if we did this?
Well, yeah, what I'm looking at, and it depends on the funding, right? But right now, we're paying about two-sixty-two for a lease up there with our property taxes because it's not town-owned property, so we have to pay property taxes, our lease. And we paid forty thousand per year. And this board incorporated, you know, inherited this. So it's been tough on us trying to deal with this, plus the education piece and funding overall for the schools, which I think we've done a good job with Level Funded last year on the budget and doing other things with our purchasing policies over the last couple of years to save taxpayer money and do more with the dollar. So this solution here, if it came in at two-point-five, you know, depending on what the finance terms are, the second part of my presentation here is about funding, so just give me a second to get to that.
That's fine.
But if we can get it in at about two-point-five, I think there'll be a considerable savings, depending on the finance part. And you figure, we're in year eight of the lease at about two hundred to two hundred and fifty. It's gone up about three percent per year. So we've spent, you know, well over two, three million dollars in lease, and I don't want to... Now you don't need stairwells, you don't need elevator. And if we, if we design it, and the reason for coming to you folks is we probably got to spend about $15,000. We have a full set of plans for the two-story building that we had developed back four, five years ago. So we would need the architect to relay out a one-story building and, and be able to put it out to bid for accurate pricing. So we've got a number of about $15,000. The superintendent and the business manager have been working on this, so I can bring it back to the board and see what we want to do. But you folks are number one, as I came to you the first time and the council worked with us. So I don't want to get into a situation where we have nothing to look for and, and then we're renegotiating the lease. So what, what I'm asking you folks is would you entertain us looking at building a one-story building? It would match this building. We would have it approved through you folks, of course. And the town manager would get the right people to look at it and, and make it look just like Town Hall. And that way, we could spend a little bit of money to get drawings to 40% so we could get a GMP and see where it comes in. We're hoping it's between 2.3 and 2.5.
Bob, for the public, would you just explain the cost savings that would save the taxpayer if we did this?
Well, yeah, what I'm looking at, and it depends on the funding, right? But right now, we're paying about $262,000 for a lease up there with our property taxes because it's not town-owned property, so we have to pay property taxes, our lease. And we paid $40,000 per year. And this, this board incorporated, you know, inherited this. So it's, it's been tough on us trying to deal with this, plus the education piece and, and funding overall for the schools, which I think we've done a good job with level funded last year on the budget and doing other things with our purchasing policies over the last couple of years to save taxpayer money and do more with the dollar. So this solution here, if it came in at 2.5, you know, depending on what the finance terms are, second part of my, my presentation here is about funding. So just give me a second to get to that.
That's fine.
But if we can get it in at about 2.5, I think there'll be a considerable savings, depending on the finance part. And you figure we're in year, year eight of the lease at about 200 to 250. It's gone up about 3% per year. So we've spent, you know, well over $2, $3 million in lease. And I don't want to waste any more taxpayer dollars. I'd rather have it going towards a property we own eventually, and it goes away. So some of the savings, I think, will happen quickly. And to that point, I'll go back to what the council had offered us back seven years ago was a $2 million loan to build it and us pay back $200,000 a year at interest-free. And what I was thinking after seeing that I sit through 95% of the council meetings and seeing some, maybe some additional revenue come in from Gilcrest of 1.9 million. And we have roughly about a $600,000 fund balance coming up the end of this fiscal year, if things balance, is about two and a half million dollars. So if it's possible, if the, if the budgeting comes in and we could use those funds, we would save upwards of $300,000 to $450,000 in interest over the 10- or 15-year bond. So these are some thoughts and ideas that I've had and talked with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent and the finance director. I've talked to Sean a little bit about it, and I've talked to Justin a little bit about it and yourself, Ron, and that's why I wanted you suggested to bring it to the council to get everybody's opinion. But that's, that's what we'd like to look at, you know, nothing is solid yet. We'd have to, it's probably a three-to-four-month process to get a floor plan designed where we can send it out to bid and get accurate pricing. If it comes in at $4 million, it's, it's probably out of reach, and we got to look at a different alternative. We did look at buying property, you know, as you know, we looked at Five Butrick, and that sold. We did look at the old Roby House next to CVS. That's a 200-year-old home. And that's going to need some work into it, and I don't know that it's, it makes sense to get in for the, what they're looking for. We, we still have an open dialogue with Verani Realty looking at property too. So if something comes up, you know, we could change. But I think we're getting down to the 11th hour here where if we don't bring something that we could get out. And if this was all to go perfect, we'd be done a year sooner with our lease, which would save about $250,000 on top of the interest. So that's just some of the thoughts I wanted to throw to you guys to see and get your input before I bring it to the school board and that. So I, I think that's what I've got to this point.
Any questions for Chair?
Yeah, please. Go ahead.
What is the effect on the tax rate that the current lease is on the taxpayers?
I, I couldn't tell you what that is. You'd have to just figure it out. Take, take the $262,000 and divide it into that, Ted.
Wasn't sure if you brought it with you.
Yeah.
Pensions that you're providing.
I didn't bring my calculator with me and that, but just run the numbers on that. But we'll definitely be under it if, if we can do it for that. I think we're going to be $40,000 to $50,000 a year savings for, you know, 10 or 12 years, depending on the financing.
And what did you say the current lease is right now per year?
$262,000 with taxes and the build-out.
Was it projected to go up per year, you were saying?
It goes up about 3% a year.
A year, okay.
And taxes go up, you know, on the building, which affects us as well.
Right, of course.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Deb.
So I think it's great that you're thinking about it early and you're thinking out of the box, which is yay.
Running out of ideas.
Well, a couple of things. I think you might want to think about ABC kind of suggestions. So I like your idea of over here, but if you build it to take the weight of a second floor, where you guys would have the first floor, then the town could have the second floor. And you can, you don't need stairs and things. They can come through that door right there again and go back up and down. It would be separate yet together. So that might be another, so you have your single pricing, right? And then you price another one that says, this is with the, the beams to be able to hold a thing on top because we are going to need that space. We need, and that, we could get, even store some documents. I, I think we have a storage unit. We could be using it up there and save the cost on the storage unit. So I'm just thinking about that. And did you think about also, and everybody's going to get mad at me, but I'm going to say it, the old Lyons Hall or Reverend Morrison facility? I mean, Derry has an old facility for the years. Hudson's the same way. It's an old building. It's kind of cool. It's historical teaching. It's kind of interesting. You know, even if it's, you're not taking the whole building, but just a part of it.
That, that is actually about half the size of what we would build here on one floor. So it's not, what we're thinking here too, Deb, is we may need with a one-floor, we may need to put two departments in the high school to make it fit. So that's like half of what we need at the Reverend Morrison. We looked at that when we first started looking.
So the whole building is half of what you need?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
So we're thinking if it's here. And if there's a meeting in one or two departments, we're able to take two classrooms and convert into office somewhere in the building that works, then if they have a meeting, they can walk across the street if it's here. But we did look at that about eight, nine years ago and, you know.
I, I didn't know, so.
Appreciate, appreciate that.
But you know, even using some of our space here would be.
That helps us too, and that would be helpful too if we had a meeting and this room might be available or the meeting rooms. That's why we don't need as much space. That's what we talked about because we had a very large training room in the, in the original plans that we would eliminate. And we could utilize either the chamber here or other of the conference rooms that during the day are usually.
Empty.
Empty, so it might help save everybody a little bit, so.
So I think the only other thing that I would ask is that you look at it with a second floor in the future. Doesn't have to happen at the same time, but just to have it prepared to add a second floor because that might be the perfect all-around.
Yeah, I, I get, because we have the original plans that we priced out four years ago. That came in at about 4.8. So it'd be similar to that, other than beams up so high. But then you'd have to tear the roof off, empty the building to be able to do that. So then what would you do? That's, we're trying to look at ways of cost savings. So I mean, I can do that exercise. It's just going to cost a little more money to do that.
Okay. Well, I just was curious because I think that in the long run, because I know the Town Hall was saying they needed to expand.
Yeah.
And that, you know, I know we're paying for storage space.
Okay.
And so.
Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, I can talk to the architect to see what he could do if a second floor could be added. I originally thought, you know, why, why not use the original plans and just pour the floor? Because it's steel building and just use the first floor.
Yeah.
But I'd have to check on the fire codes, even though you say you can come through here. I think there's got to be access if you're on the second floor, a second means of egress and first and second to get off of there. If you're on that end of the building and you can't get to here, you got to get out from the second floor.
Well, yeah.
And then you need, you know, do you need the elevator there where you have the one here? So there's a lot of questions.
Right, but I mean, like the second floor, they could go through the, I forget the name of that department over there. But, or they could have another access out downstairs.
Sure.
Out that top floor.
Sure. Yeah.
It's thoughts. It's just thoughts.
That's good. I'd like to see what the one-story comes in at, just to see if we're in the ballpark.
Yeah, me too.
So Bob, originally on the two-story, how many square feet?
That was about $10,400, I believe, and the town was going to have two small offices, roughly 150 square feet each.
And on the single level, you'd end up with how many square feet?
It's about 6,000 square feet because now you don't need the stairwells, you don't need the elevator. So that opens up office space. And then we wouldn't do the big conference training room, being able to utilize some space here as well as over at the high school with a conference room over there. So we're trying to make, make it as cost-avoidable because, you know, like we said, we were going to move it into Moose Hill if that plan went through with the empty space from moving into the K-5 program. But like I said, I, I don't want to get into the kindergarten because I don't know where that's going.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, how many more years until the current lease is up?
Two after this year.
Two after this year, so in a way, kind of three.
So if we got something approved this coming March, it would take a year to build. That would get us out a year earlier, which would save upwards of $200,000.
Yeah, yeah.
On top of that, you know, so.
So it looks like, I think, Justin usually says is about $62,500 per penny.
That sounds right.
So it's about four cents per thousand.
Yeah.
Is what the lease is costing us. And certainly I commend looking at one floor because there's a lot of cost savings, not having stairs, not having an elevator, not having additional sprinkler systems, not having all the ADA compliance that you need with having a second floor. So having, moving to a first floor, I think, would be a great option to reduce those costs.
Yeah.
Town Manager?
Yeah, so I spoke to the superintendent as well as Bob on this too, and I, I agree with the first-floor concept as well. We have quite a bit of space that's not being adequately utilized. All these file rooms in the digital world, they don't exist. So that's really high-quality space that we, if you look at the full build-out of this town, we should have sufficient space with the rooms we already have. And the opportunity to share space with the school district here, there's, there's a lot of saving opportunities here. We have to look at the parking issue, but I think there's ways to address that. But I would recommend that we form a task force with the school district to explore this and see where it goes. If it doesn't go anywhere, it doesn't go anywhere, but I think it's worthwhile. Also, interest rates are really high right now. Using cash to be able to let them borrow it at no interest rate makes a whole lot of sense. When interest rates are 1.78%, 2%, it made sense to borrow money at that time. It doesn't make sense to borrow money right, right now. And that really gives them a leg up in getting that project and moving it forward. And we, obviously, we're going to get our cash reserves back at the end of the day. So this is really, I think, an opportunity that's worth at least exploring further here in the next few months with the school district.
Any other question with the council?
I just want to say that, you know, as long as I've lived in this town, it's always been great when you see the school and the town work together. And if this is an opportunity for us to work with them and.
Couldn't agree more. I think we do a lot together now between DPW, the town, you name it. They need somebody here, one of our electricians, HVAC, we work together. And if there's a way to save our taxpayers on the school side, the school board and superintendent diligently for the last two, three years have changed a lot of policies and, you know, looked at our budget very tightly to, to limit, you know, our budget increase and to be flat last year. And hopefully continue that trend is, is a goal of ours with the education on the rise because they've made some really great strides inside the buildings as well, which is number one. And number two is, is the cost right along with it, but the education's so important. But we're just running out of time and not knowing what's, what went on last year. We can't really wait. So if we could, you know, move forward with a, we'd have, like I said, we'd have to spend about $15,000 to do a floor plan layout off of the schematic we already have with the architect so we could send it out to bid to get some preliminary pricing. And then if it seems to make sense, we would go ahead with 60% drawings, you know, and get that done before bond, the bond deadline in January. So we've, we kind of have to act now. That's why I'm here tonight. So I appreciate you, you hearing me.
Good, Dan. Are you looking for consensus?
I think, I think Bob's looking for consensus from the council if, if we would, I guess, be somewhat in agreement for him to spend $15,000 of taxpayer money.
$15,000 of my money?
For Chairman? Yes, please, Ted. If I can have clarification from the, uh, school chairman. I believe you were looking to use $15,000 from the school budget that you already had, so, correct? It's not from the town budget. No, it's not from the town, but it's still taxpayer money. I just want to make sure that Dan had that clarified.
I'm just saying my tax.
No, I just, yeah, and I like to make sure everybody's aware of what, what we're spending and when and why, so.
You want to make sure that was clear for the public?
I'll scratch.
Any, any other questions?
I think it's great.
I think it's a good.
Does everyone feel like Bob can move forward?
Certainly.
Yes.
Certainly.
And I'll bring it to my board tomorrow night.
Yeah.
So we can discuss it too, and then I can get back to you folks. And that, as we've not really decided, been working with the superintendent and wanted to talk with the town manager and, and finance on both sides to see if it's doable. So appreciate your time tonight, and hopefully we can find a solution for this seven-year bad itch so far. So appreciate your time tonight, folks.
Bob, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Next up is a fire science class overview.
Good evening, gentlemen. How are we today?
How are you doing?
Good, good, good. So thank you for giving us this opportunity to explain one of the initiatives that we have started. So let me just give you a brief introduction. Division Chief of Fire Prevention, Brian Johnston, and Lieutenant Tony Macaron. So Brian is in charge of Fire Prevention Division. Part of that Fire Prevention Division is our community risk reduction. So under community risk reduction, just like the same, we try to reduce harm to the community. We're also trying to do reach-out to address an issue that we have, which is we're having a hard time finding good quality firefighters. The solution came to us without us really looking at it. We ended up finding a number of really great local kids from the Lanonderry School District. Some of them attended Manchester Community, Manchester Technical?
MST.
MST. MST, let's go with that. And some of them didn't know about it because of one thing or another. The idea came, well, how come they don't know about it? They have to learn about it in their junior year to apply for it in their senior year. We're kind of taking a step even further and introducing a program in their junior year to get them ready for that so that in two years, they have a good idea of whether the fire service is something they're interested in, and they have a leg up on other, other people. A lot of them have been going to Lake Region Community College, which is an awesome opportunity as well. So we're trying to give them an idea of where they're going. So Tony's here on behalf of the, one of his concurrent duties, meaning that his normal duty every day of the week is a lieutenant on a fire engine. Almost all of our employees have a concurrent duty because we can't get stuff done with a limited amount of people we have. So Tony has poured, if I say hundreds of hours.
That'd be accurate.
Into this program to try to make it work. This program started under Chief Butler and Town Manager Mike Malaguti. And it's kind of hit a pause for a little while. And Tony brought the idea to the school, and from there, Tony, if you don't mind, taking it from there.
Sure. So like the fire chief said, this program began with Chief Bo Butler. He started having conversations with the school district and school board members, specifically Bob Slater, who's sitting behind me. They wanted to try and bring forth a program, and he asked me to go ahead and develop a program. He set forth certain guidelines, which was it can't cost the fire department any money and make sure that the kids have everything they need to succeed. So here with this program, we wanted to give the kids a real opportunity, a chance to walk across the street after graduation into the firehouse, prepared and ready to serve their community. This internship is more than just a class. It's a partnership. It's a unique collaboration between the high school and the fire department, built to ignite interest in the fire service and prepare our students in the future of public safety. The program itself is an extended learning opportunity or an ELO. It's designed to attract sophomores and juniors, and our goal is simple. We're giving those students a real-world opportunity, an introduction into the fire service, while also preparing them for continued studies at the Manchester School of Technology in their senior year. This year, the program will run at the start of the school year to mid-December. Students will attend during their B and C block periods, reporting to the fire department in full uniform, which they are not all happy about, before returning to the high school to complete their daily academic studies. So what does that really mean in practice? And what does the program look like? Students are participating in a balance of academia and practical training. It's a hybrid learning process, which they're all used to now because of COVID. We take online modules from the On My Time Learning Academy at the Fire Academy. The Fire Academy developed this program so anyone can log on and start taking these modules, the videos that come with tests. Then these people would seek out a state instructor to get their certification or get eligibility to test. We're utilizing that platform to start to teach our kids. They'll be assigned reading through handbooks, fire engineering, and they're going to have in-person training two to three times a week, which is going to reinforce all the concepts that they're learning. They're also going to be required to do a physical fitness program. The reason for that is it's designed to meet the demanding readiness and standards expected today of our firefighters. Additionally, students will complete community service hours, and they will also engage in case studies, exploring historic fire events like the Coconut Grove Fire or the Station Nightclub Fire, and learn not just about the tactics, but they will also learn about the human impact of fire. This program isn't just about knowledge and skills. This program is about. This program is about discipline, teamwork, community service, and a sense of responsibility. We want our students to walk away from this experience with a deeper understanding of what it means to serve. Whether they pursue a career in firefighting, emergency medicine, law enforcement, or any public service field. Like the chief had mentioned, why are we doing this now? We're doing it because recruitment and retention in the fire service is more challenging than ever. Across the region and the nation, fire departments are struggling to find qualified applicants and we are no different. We look for people who have an understanding about what this job means, the responsibility, the training it takes. And the heart that you need to do this job. This program helps us build that pipeline from the ground up. Introducing students to the fire service early, giving them a head start on their training. And connecting them to mentors who will guide them every step of the way. Here's the real big picture for Lunenary. If a student comes through our program, goes on and completes and gets their fire one. And gets their EMT and takes their CPAT test, which is our physical agility test. Why wouldn't we give them a shot here at Lunenary? Why wouldn't we hire somebody who has proven themselves, understands our culture, knows our expectations? And we've prepped them for this job. In my program, for those who excel. Will get the chance to earn their firefighter one certificate in my program alone, instead of just going to MST. That's only for some of the most motivated students. Whether or not they want to earn that firefighter one certificate, they will still get the credit for being in my class and participating. Looking ahead, if this is successful, in 2026. We would hope to offer an EMT program as well. Giving our students another pathway to public safety and health careers. Multiple members of the fire department are working closely with the acting fire chief. To pursue and approve the Lunenary Fire Department to become an educational training center through the state of New Hampshire. Very long process. It's about a two hundred page application. And that's the only way we're going to be able to run an EMT program over at the high school. So you can understand why we're delaying it a little bit. At its core, this program really is about introducing students to a meaningful career pathway. It's about building fundamental skills in emergency response. It's about discipline, teamwork, civic responsibility. And it's about giving students the chance to discover what they're truly capable of. To our students, it's a chance to explore a calling. To our community, that's an investment in workforce and our people. To our department, that's a chance to mentor the next generation of firefighters and leaders. I just want to mention, none of this would have been possible without the help, the constant help. Of Rick Barnes, Katie Sullivan, Bob Slater, Bo Butler, Amity Small, the entire school board really. And every single Lunenary firefighter that I bothered, non-stop for about six, seven or eight months. Questioning them and asking them what their opinions are to build this program. Thank you for your support and time. Thank you for the belief in the program.
Excellent. So I just want to reiterate two things. One is that there's been a lot of hard work put into this. Justin has looked at the numbers. There's a way for us to take money in and take money out without affecting our budget. And I think the best part is that we've proven that we've got great kids in this community that have been wonderful employees. And I know there's more out there. Any questions?
Council, any questions?
Not, you can go first, go ahead.
Ted?
Will you be the only instructor?
I'm working with the acting chief. He knows that we need to have, uh, four more people in concurrent duties. We're going to probably have to attach them to community service and I'm going to work with them on each individual shift. I will be there at all times, no matter what. I've promised the school board that this is going to happen, so.
Will this interfere with either, uh, your time at the department or anyone else's time at the department?
Absolutely not.
Okay. That is my worry is that it might interfere with service around town.
We are so committed to, to making this happen. All the firefighters are extremely excited to see these kids come through and to have the opportunity to teach them. Just like we always do, we're going to make it work no matter what.
And as you're making us a hybrid class model, what would they be doing on the days that it's more of an online, uh, segment?
During the online segments, they still are required in B and C blocks to be at school. They will have a study hall. If I am free and available, I will go over there. If not, I've worked with Katie Sullivan. Uh, they will have a teacher there. That is the time they're going to be logging on. That is the time they're going to be doing all their learning. Uh, their assignments or homework is going to come afterwards. Uh, that will be the Coconut Grove Fire, uh, the research, the community service, things like that.
And will this be a year-long class? Or this be a semester class?
So this is going to be the semester. I believe it's, uh, starting in September and it's going to end right around mid-December because the kids start to have finals.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
I think this is so amazing. This is like very exciting. It's fresh. So I know you're looking at Lunenary kids. Um, are you going to look at the adult kid, the adult ed students as well? And maybe the, some of the kids from Lunenary that go to like the upper room. The kids that might've had a little trouble finding their path, but could still be great, um, in this industry. Are you guys opening it up to those students as well or just Lunenary High School? I mean, they are Lunenary High School, but they're not the traditional, um, Lunenary High School.
So I, I guess that would really depend if their schedule was able to align with our schedule.
But you'd open it up to them.
If they're a Lunenary School District student, then I don't see any reason why they would not be allowed to participate. But again, they would have to be able to be there for B and C period, because that's the, the, the class time it is. So I don't know how that affects either one of those populations.
I don't either, but I just think that, you know, those kids always seem to get kind of, and it's nice when they can have an opportunity as well.
Oh, absolutely. And we have a process. Katie and I have a process. We work together. We interview the kids. This is the first go-round. We're going to see what works and what doesn't work.
Yeah.
And troubled kids aren't a problem.
I, I, I just think that they, they need help up and that's all, you know, we all make mistakes.
Absolutely.
And so I, I heard you say you wanted to do this. So eventually we would be the hub and you would work with other. Fire departments and, and offering or training them on how to do this as well or?
So in understanding this better, I actually had to go up. I, I ha, happened to have, uh, my instructor one, two and three already. I needed my state instructor, so I gave twenty free hours of teaching up at MST with a man named Leo Roy. He got me my state instructor. That's mentorship that you just have to do. So I talked the kids up there. MST runs a program with, which is firefighter one program and an EMT combined. They do it year-long, first semester, second semester. They only accept, uh, seniors and it's in Manchester. And this last go-around, we had one student from Lunenary that was up there. So we were trying to get students, uh, in here that were interested ahead of time. We're going to build Lunenary out first, but I know that Leo has already reached out to Frank Fritzel, uh, over in Bedford, who's the fire chief. And he's looking at trying to start this program. Everybody's just watching to see what happens with me and this program right now. And if it works out and whatever, uh, mistakes I make, then they'll fix it and they won't do that and they'll get it right.
Yeah. Again, I commend both, all of you for doing this. It's amazing.
And, and one of the important things is this is going to be a small group with a hands-on instructor. This is not going to be a class of twenty-four students sitting there with a instructor in front of the classroom. So the student to teacher ratio is going to be pretty tight. And I believe you capped the first year at.
So we've got eight students, which is why it's probably going to be me teaching with one other instructor there.
Did you say you're going to be starting at this fall?
Uh, yes, September first.
Awesome.
Or September when it starts.
The students lined up already?
Yes, we have eight students lined up. Good to go. I actually just, uh, measured them for gear and getting them ready for their uniforms and their collared shirts, which they also want.
That's awesome.
A question.
Not a question, more of a, I think this is a great way to hopefully get young people, young Lunenary residents interested in serving our community. I think it's, uh, I look around, all our town employees. I remember Tony, when you were just a little toddler, all right? Grew up in Lunenary. You're working for Lunenary. And I see a lot of that, you know, in our town employees. I think that's a great idea. I'd like to ask the town managers, is there any way we can expand this maybe to other departments? I mean, I, I'm just thinking DPW, um, you know, if, if we can get somebody out there to help them. Somebody get interested. I know I have a, a three-year-old that would love to get into trucks and stuff, maybe when he gets older, but, um. Yeah, I, I think this is a great idea that you guys worked on. I think it's going to be amazing for the community. If we can get some of our young Lunenary residents to stay in Lunenary, work for Lunenary, live in Lunenary. It's a win-win for everybody. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, oh.
Mr. Thomas, you go ahead.
So this is an important proactive step the fire department's taking here to, to grow our own people, as I like to refer to it as that. The labor market that we're in, it's not going to get any better over the next several years. This is a smart move in the fire department to do that, because that's how we're going to get people more likely in their profession. And as you indicated, hopefully stay in the community and, and develop that interest at the youngest age. So my hat's off to the lieutenant and the chief and, and the staff in terms of putting this together, really good proactive step. Obviously DPW would be another, that's another area where we're short people. And all of our, I'll call them low-density professions, there's only small numbers of people throughout town hall, from clerks to assessors to even town managers. Uh, growing those people at the earliest age and sparking that interest is a definite need because there's a shortage of people in the public sector in general. And this is a good, uh, proactive step here.
I think if you look at our workforce alone, we're, we're an older workforce that we haven't.
Seasoned, seasoned.
Seasoned, seasoned. Okay, we have a seasoned workforce.
Well, it, our workforce is getting younger and younger. So it's, um, it's been nice. And I think we probably have six or in the last five years, six to ten Lunenary kids that we've hired. Just without this program and we, it, it came upon us.
Great.
That's awesome.
Thank you.
All right.
Any other questions?
Go once.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
This is a great program.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have a resolution two zero two five dash zero nine. Recognize Recreation Director Art Salitis for his service as interim town manager. Dan. Yeah, you.
Okay, uh, resolution, resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero nine. A resolution relative to recognition, recognizing Recreation Director Art Salitis for his service as interim town manager. Whereas Art Salitis has faithfully served the town of Lunenary for many years as recreational director. Fostering programs and opportunities that have enriched the lives of residents of all ages and strengthened community spirit. And whereas during the time of transition in town government. Director Salitis graciously accepted the role of interim town manager, applying his deep institutional knowledge. Very deep. Calm leadership and collaborative style to maintain continuity and effective governance. And whereas throughout his tenure in this interim role, Director Salitis led with integrity. Professionalism and a heartfelt dedication to public service. Earning the respect and admiration of town staff, elected officials and residents alike. And whereas Director Salit, Salitis is widely recognized as a beloved member of the Lunenary community. Someone who's approachable, wisdom and good humor have left a lasting positive impact on countless individuals and families. Now therefore be, be, now therefore be it resolved by the town council of the town of Lunenary. Hereby extends its sincere appreciation to Art Salitis for his exemplary service as interim town manager. And for his many years of steadfast dedication to the betterment of the town of Lunenary.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Town Manager.
I just have a couple of things to add. This is the guy, every time we seem to be shorter and troubled, this guy seems to pop in from what I've been able to read and, and be told by other folks. From working in the school district to recreation, and this isn't your first gig as interim, my understanding, of town manager. I'm hoping it's going to be a while before you'd have to do it again, I'm working on that, but, um. So I mean, that, that's pretty important to be able to do that and have someone that can fit in just like that. This was left in my office. I think it was pretty important that Art had put there. And I'm going to read it and it's got a little picture here. It says, "We all need to pull the wagon in the same direction." And there's a picture of that. I think that's really important now more than ever, that he left that for me. Because that's exactly what we all need to do on our team. And that's the type of leadership that he has displayed since, from what I've been hearing, I've only been here three weeks. What everybody tells me, he's the guy that's helping everybody pull that wagon, bringing that team forward to get the job done. So this is an outstanding civil servant that we have right here, and I'm glad we're recognizing him today. So thank you for that.
Excellent.
Thank you, Art.
Thank you.
All right, come on up.
Thank you for your time. Thank you, sir, for helping us.
Being embarrassed.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you.
You're always welcome.
Thank you, sir. Next up, we have resolution two zero two five dash ten, recognition of Police Chief Kim Allen Bernard for his service as interim town manager.
Yes, thank you. And whereas Chief Kim Allen Bernard was honorably served the town of Lunenary as chief of police. Demonstrating unwavering dedication, professionalism and integrity in the performance of his duties. And whereas during a period of transition in municipal leadership. Chief Bernard selfishly stepped forward to serve as interim town manager. Assuming this critical role in addition to his responsibilities as chief of police. And whereas throughout his tenure as interim town manager. Chief Bernard provided steady leadership, endured the continued delivery of essential town services. And maintained the highest standard of public service. And whereas his commitment to teamwork, transparent governance and the well-being of Luner's residents was evident. In his thoughtful decision-making and collaborative spirit. And whereas the town council, town staff and citizens of Luner are sincerely grateful for Chief Bernard's willingness to serve. In this capacity and for the professionalism and excellence with which he carried out his expanded responsibilities. Now therefore be it resolved by the town council of Lunenary. Hereby extends its deepest appreciation to Chief Kim Bernard for his exemplary service as interim town manager. And acknowledges his vital contributions to the town of Lunenary.
I just have a couple of things to add if I may.
Absolutely.
So, uh, asking the chief of police to do something like this, it's quite a different job. The Lunenary Police Department is one of the largest police departments in the state. It's within the top ten. So managing that department and then also taking on this job, a job that he's never done before, that is quite a role to have to deal with. It's a very different job that has to be done. And I think, uh, Chief Bernard has done that quite professionally, done a great job and it's served us well during this interim period. So once again, we're fortunate to have him as well. So thank you, sir, for your work on this.
Thank you, sir.
That would be a really good idea.
Two great men.
Yeah, absolutely.
Wherever you want.
Thank you both for, for your help and your service to us. We greatly appreciate it. Next up is sale of tax-deeded property, three sixty-seven Mammoth Road.
Yes, so thi, this is a piece of property that was tax-deeded back in two thousand twenty-one. Uh, it's time, I think, to move on, dispose of that property. We don't want to be holding on to pieces of property we don't need. It has a mobile home, which is in very poor condition. Uh, if this were anybody else, we would probably take an action RSA one fifty-five B. If this were anybody else, we would probably take an action RSA 155B to have them demolish the building. So it's important that we do the right thing and that we remove that structure. We've already done asbestos testing. There is no asbestos or hazardous materials, which is rather fortunate. So the next step for us would be, obviously if you authorize that, is for us to move forward and I would demolish that structure. And then we would put it up for sale. And then that would, we would cover all of our legal expenses, the past due taxes, and the cost of demolishing the structure, but all be recouped in the sale of that property. And I'm asking the authorization to do that under the as justice requires provision in statute, which I've enumerated in the cover sheet that you have in front of you. And you do have a draft motion to do that. There's a process to go through. I'm not sure whether you've done that in the past. But when we're selling town-owned property, it should be go before the planning board, the Conservation Commission, and the Heritage Commission for review. And it's unclear to me as to whether or not that was the case in the past, or if it was, so be it. But, and it's not actually required for tax-deed property, but I think we should go through it anyway. And then we take the next steps and move forward to get that done. That's what I'm requesting that you authorize me to be able to do at this time.
Any questions with the council? Dan?
Why would we demolish the building and not just sell it like that?
Because right now, actually, it's in a state that we shouldn't be turning over to somebody else because it's unsafe. It's, again, a dilapidated structure. And it'll actually produce a better sale if we demolish that. And again, that will recoup that when we sell the land. Because I don't know how long it'll take to do that.
Deb?
Yeah, so when we sell it, how is it going to be sold? Are we going to put it up to auction or?
So that's why I asked, as the as justice requires provision, there are several options. Sealed bid, public auction, or as justice requires. And that allows for us to put it in the hands of a realtor. So we can have a much broader base. You tend not to get as good a price with the auction or the sealed bid. There's a small number of people. Most people are not aware of it. If it goes on the listserv that the land is available, they have a better chance of getting a higher price for that. Of course, the realtor's going to want their fee, but so isn't the auction firm as well.
Okay. And I heard you say, but I'm not sure, I just want to make sure, we have a policy for this because I know we've done it before in the process. Or in my mind, it was kind of done and we went, what, that got sold?
Yeah, it's actually state statute. It's not even policy. It's required, but.
It is a state statute, so we just follow the state rulings on how this works, right?
Well, that's one thing. And the other thing is you might, we should consider a policy when it comes to selling land.
Yeah.
There's different procedures you can use. Where I came from before, we had a council policy that talked about that. And went in detail about that in terms of giving first rights to abutting landowners. There's all kinds of things that you might want to consider, in and above what the statute requires of us.
So how do we take steps to do something like that? So that we do have a policy, so it never falls through the cracks?
If someone puts an agenda item on there, and we're going to talk about that under our rules, you send the agenda, I'll prepare that for you. I'll give you some options as to what could be in that policy. You make whatever changes you want to, and we put it into place. But that could be done very quickly. I already, obviously, have one formatted, ready to go for us to be able to do that. That, you know, if you choose to. But it gives you a little bit more options. Because again, I prefer transparency, more public comment, more opportunities for folks and say, you know, we could use this for that. Haven't, and normally we send it out to all the departments of the town and the school district. So if they have an interest in the property, even though that's not required by statute.
Yeah.
That's good in policy. And that way, you know, if some department didn't think about, hey, we really could use this for this purpose, as a need.
The school.
Exactly, right? And that's why it's important that we notify all of them. That would be part of that policy that we, I would suggest we need to consider adopting.
I think that's a great idea. One counselor, I'd love to get that going.
And public comment.
Yes.
Because I think that's an important piece.
Inputs always good.
We don't sell land all that often. Why not be, why not do that?
Yep. But I appreciate your answer and thank you. And as one counselor, I'd like to look forward to doing that.
Dan, you have a question?
I just think it's a great idea if we listed with a realtor to maximize our, the amount of money we can get out of it. But isn't it my understanding, though, if, let's say the property sold for $100,000 and back taxes, demo, whatever cost the town had into it was 50, that 50,000 goes to the original owner, correct?
That's correct. On the State v. Palazzo, that's a Supreme Court decision on that a few years ago in Bedford.
Yep.
It's actually Bedford versus Palazzo, where the extra proceeds, even beyond the three-year period, it used to be after three years, the municipality kept all of it. Now you have to provide that money back to the, you have to file a motion for interpleaded with Superior Court. If you can't find the property owners, and if they can't be found, then it would come back to the town. But there's a whole process for that, statutory process.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I'll make a motion that the Lunendary Town Council hereby authorizes the town manager to take all the steps necessary, as justice may require, for the sale of the tax-deeded property at 367 Mammoth Road in Lunendary, New Hampshire, and to execute all documents required in furtherance of the sale of the property.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Deb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair votes in affirmative.
And of course, you want to be updated on the status of the process all along the way.
Please.
Yes.
Next up is old business. We have resolution 2025-11. Adopting rules of order for the Town Council as a first reading. Any questions on the, any?
I wanted to get a red line paper so, you know, I could see where the changes were.
Okay.
And I didn't get one, so.
I don't have one either, so.
Yeah, that would have been helpful.
It would be, because I was like trying to do it, and I really didn't have enough time to sit there. And so personally, I would like to have that to be able to, just see what was changed.
Okay.
If that's okay.
Can we please table this item until we have all five members?
Oh, yes, it's a first reading tonight, Ted. We're not.
Thank you.
Yeah, yep.
We're going to read it, all right? We're not going to waive the reading.
A lot of times we waive first meetings.
I can accept the motion, waive the first reading, absolutely, if you want to do that.
I think we should read it, so people know. No?
It's up to what you guys want to do.
I don't know. You want to read it? You want to waive it? What do you think, Ted?
Personally, I think we should have all the, when we're ready to do it, that's when we should, should do it. So for now, it's, like Ted said, tabled, and when we read it and.
Why don't we just waive the first reading?
Okay.
All right. Motion to waive the first meeting. Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Dan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair votes in affirmative.
So just to be clear, we're going to go to public hearing next, and we're going to get you the red line that you're looking for on that. And the public can look at the red line, obviously, too, because it'll be in the packet.
Yes.
And it would be on the website, too, so they can compare.
Yeah. Obviously, we're still, you know, things are still, a bit in flux here as we make the new rules.
I know.
But yeah, it's important that everybody get a chance to, that way, when they come to the public hearing, they can actually tell us what they think.
Yep.
Right. Okay.
All right. Old business. Next up is approval of minutes. June 2nd, 2025, Town Council minutes. Any questions or changes?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Deb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair votes in affirmative.
Liaison reports. What? No. Oh, separately. Is there an issue?
Nope.
Do I need to do them separately, sir? Or do you know, or? There's unsealed minutes.
Yeah, they, because one of them is non-public.
Okay. Thank you, thank you, Dan. So I'll accept the motion to accept the unsealed minutes.
So moved.
Motion by Ted.
Second.
Second by Deb. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Chair votes in affirmative.
Thank you, Ted.
That was a good touch, Dan.
Liaison reports.
The concert of common on this past Wednesday with Couch was quite a show. We had quite a crowd. It was incredible. I don't think I've ever seen that many people up and dancing, ever. It was quite incredible. So I know they are quite a band to try and get for the town, and it was quite a show. So I'm hoping that even next week with the Linda LaRonstadt Band will be even more exciting.
And you had nice weather, too.
Yeah. All right. I don't know. I mean, Stephen Lee must have prayed to the right person to have the right weather on Wednesday nights. And any from you?
For me?
I see.
Yes, they're all typed out, okay? My, the library I just touched on earlier. Traffic safety, we didn't have a meeting. But I did receive a very lengthy draft of a traffic management policy from our town manager that I look forward to discussing with that committee. It's great information. ZBA, we have a few open positions that are on the website. So please, if you have any time to help out this board, please reach out, get ahold of Kirsten. Senior Resource, they were unable to, I was unable to attend the meeting, and was told that they didn't have a quorum. Again, this is another group that needs volunteers. So if you would like to help out on the Senior Resource Committee, please contact Kirsten. This is a great committee, so.
I had recreation, but was unable to attend, so I don't have anything to report.
Okay. Town manager report.
So my supervisor, AKA my wife, told me I went too fast last meeting. So I'm going to slow down a little bit, so. Just want to go over the agendas a little bit for the future. As you see, we're starting to project out agendas at least two meetings ahead. And we just updated that today with some of the changes you and I talked about this morning. So again, I will not be, I'll be on vacation, the seventh pre-planned vacation. So we'll be talking about the PUD. And again, I'm going to have draft motions. I'm looking at three different options for you. So I'll have, you'll be able to take whichever option you deem appropriate on that, and we'll build that out for you. Also, impact fees. We'll have a motion for, obviously, there's one motion on that to, if you choose to move forward with that process, that we can initiate that and get that going, because it does take a while to be able to develop that fully. Well, also, the, one thing that you don't have for the seventh listed on there is the town of Dairy, the extension of a water line along Old Dairy Road. They'll be here to talk about that and the location of a pump station on land that we own. They're looking for a lease to be able to do that, so they can extend that rather significant water line through there. For us, that'll provide some additional fire suppression capability in that area. And we also do have a couple of homes that have PFAS that have come back in the wells. So that'll allow us to extend our water line for those folks in that area. At least get the infrastructure in there. So that'd be a good step forward on that. And then on the 21st, the rundown is as you see it listed on there. I'm just going to go through it real quick and see if there's any questions of me in regards to that. So we have the public hearing to increase the Disabled Veterans Tax Credit. That issue is coming up, so we can get that done. There's really no big hurry on that because it doesn't take effect until January anyway. And folks can't apply until sometime after January. So we have a little bit of time to work our way through that. You've got zoning amendments. You've got the first reading of changes to 9.3, we're assigning the demolition review committee responsibilities to the Heritage Commission. That'll create some efficiencies there, I think. And then we'll be talking about the Baldwin Property Tax Exemption that they have applied for. And also, there's a pilot agreement that I'll be negotiating and bringing to you in regards to that payment in lieu of taxes. And then code of ethics policy, there's some things that we need to do, I think, to clean some of that up. We talked about the recusal process. It's not spelled out. It should be spelled out for all of our boards and committees, so everybody understands what that is. And of course, we'll provide training with that. And also, when it comes to lobbying by municipal employees, there's nothing that covers any of that, and we should clear that up as well. And then strategic plan, I'd like to talk to you about that, see how you feel about that concept. Because really, you should be giving us pretty strong direction as to where you want us to go as the administration and moving those balls forward on an annual basis. I think that's really good planning for us. I'm a big supporter of long-term planning and getting direction from the governing body as to where we should be going. And there's quite a bit of public input in that. That process takes a year to even develop one. So if you're interested in that, I'd like to get that going. If not, then obviously, that's fine, too. A lot of communities don't have a strategic plan, but I think for us, it would make some sense. And again, there's a lot of public engagement in that. Every board and committee in the town would be involved in that process to provide input. And there's other stakeholder groups we'd also involve with that. And then the, and back to that code of ethics policy, I have an elongated process for that because there's different stakeholder groups. One of those groups would be our elected officials at the state level. They deal with that on a regular basis. It would be helpful for them to give us some direct feedback, a specific ask of them, because they're dealing with that at the state level and they know what that's about. So that would be helpful to us. And again, other groups, so I've, you'll see on the cover sheet for that, that you're going to get, that's an elongated process. Take longer than what it would normally do, but I think there's no hurry. And I think it makes sense for us to do that. FMLA policy rescission. I'm not sure why the council adopted an FLMA policy. That's really, should be that the town manager to do that. And there's some changes that need to be done to be kept up to modern standards. So I'll show you the one that I'm going to be implementing. So I meet statutory requirements, the federal requirements. And then there's no sense having a council policy. It should be rescinded, but that'll be up to you to do that. And that right now is what we have scheduled for the 21st. Looking a little bit further ahead, we have to make some additional additions to the TIF plan. I don't believe you've assigned a district administrator, and you don't have a TIF advisory board, which is required by statute. So we'll need to put those pieces into place. And then you should have a plan every year that we're looking at least one charter amendment to make changes to it, clean up old language that's in there. So I want you to start thinking about that. We'll go through that process, decide if there's anything that should be changed. I started that where I was before, we just did one thing per year because otherwise you overload the voters with things, and it just doesn't work. So we're looking at amendments, not a revision. Revision requires a charter commission, but I'm just talking about amendments.
Right.
There's some things that need to be tweaked here and there. So we should be thinking about that, what we want that to be. And there's a timeline, as you probably know, if you've done that recently, with the Attorney General's Office and the Secretary of State's Office and the Commissioner of DRA. So we'll be working our way through that. We also should look at the National Civic League's model charter provisions that's used across the country. Again, freshening our, ours is a little bit old, right? It's been around for a while, right? So it might be time to look at that and make sure we have best practices that we, other municipalities are using across the country. There's an agenda request form that's in the rules that we have there. I'm really encouraging councils to use that, and that'll allow us to be a lot more efficient if we can get ahead of schedule, especially at the 10 days advance, that way we don't have things pop up. It was great that we talked about the school district tonight. And I know that the chairman really wanted to get that on, but again, I sent the agenda out before he had a chance to even tell me about it. But if we get those in advance, it allows for better planning, and it allows for the public out here to be better informed about what all the options are. So I really want to push that. And then I just got rid of my page. So anyway, I think that's important for us to move forward on that. Transportation planning, we really need to get a good handle on that. It's interesting with the amount of growth that you have here and the amount of traffic problems that you have here. There are only two projects in the 10-year highway plan. Where I came from, smaller community, a lot, I won't say a lot less development, but fewer traffic problems, and they've got like 13 projects and a lot more money being invested from the state there. We really need to up our game here, and there's a whole process in which to do that. We've got to get that going. The master plan is a key component of that. But we need to really advocate for dealing with some of these state projects because they are, they're on state roads. You don't have an urban compact other than a small area by Grunier Field up there. But the rest are state roads, which the state should be paying for. Corridor studies. And it just, it won't happen unless we push it forward, and we need to take those steps. I mean, every day when I drive around, I'm like, wow, they got some pretty serious traffic issues here. And we have nothing, or very little on the books. You have two projects, which will be helpful, but those are relatively small, and we've got a lot more work to do to deal with that. And we've got to take a very proactive step, use our legislative delegation to help us to get some of these projects done. So that's going to be a key piece moving forward. And then a town-wide water plan. I know, my understanding is there are bits and pieces, but there really isn't a master plan, per se. We really need to get that developed, too, because again, there are resources We really need to get that developed too, because again, there are resources we can get from the federal government and the state uh, to take advantage of those, low interest loans. And you've got some pretty serious issues with PFAS uh, that seem to be popping up all over the place that we need to make sure we have, we're thinking forward and we're trying to resolve this problem before we have serious health issues with our residents in our community. And that's all I have for you. Unless there's any questions for me.
I got a question.
Go ahead, Dan.
So when we talk, Sean, about the uh, only having two projects in the pipeline with the state, how do we get this ball started and, and get it rolling?
So a couple of things. Those get scored at Southern Hampshire Regional Planning Commission. And each region has uh, funds. Ironically, where I was, that region got the smallest amount of funds. It's, and, and what we've got going on here, I can't believe we don't have more projects. So we need to have projects that are shelf ready, which means we need to develop those ourselves. But a lot of these are on state roads. So we've got to push for those, those corridor studies. That produces the data to show there is a need to be able to do whatever it is, whether it be traffic signals or roundabouts or enhanced lanes, whatever it might be. Um, we've got to push that issue. So what we need is corridor studies on Route one oh two. We need corridor studies on twenty eight and one twenty eight. And then we have our own high range road, which is our issue and a couple of other roads that are seeing a lot of heavy traffic issues that uh, I've seen just by driving around. I've, I've taken the step just to go look and see where those are at peak times. And what is our plan to deal with those, especially as we have more developments coming in, there's gonna be more pressure on those. When you do these corridor studies, you should also be looking at your zoning at the same time. It should be a comprehensive project. Look at what the build out is in those particular areas. What is going to impact those roadways? Because when you talk about impact fees, especially in those other types of roads that, that we're not paying for directly from property tax dollars, how are we gonna, how are we gonna fund that? So getting all those pieces in place, impact fees is not the only way to do it. There's also what they call exactions. Uh, and there's development agreements. There's different tools that you can use, special assessment districts. There's a number of things that you can do to deal with that. We've got to build that all out. We've got to look at those issues on our roads that we're gonna have to pay for, right? Uh, but on those state roads, which is where a lot of your traffic issues are, we really got to push them to do that. And when you do that in a collaborative fashion, we've had good results. Where I was up there, Route one twenty, exit eighteen, we did the zoning at the same time. They're finishing that up right now. All, that's all funded by the state. Uh, and they, they'll be putting money to that.
Does that start at the planning board or?
Uh, it's, it's a combination of planning board and staff. The master plan is a key component. You have a transportation section in there, right? And also uh, staff. Uh, the engineering department, you know, there's one person right now, one engineer, but uh, we're gonna be addressing that shortly here as well. Um, and then we're the ones that are kind of moving that along. So one needs to look at this. You take your traffic council, what the counselor Paul had asked for, which we're getting those by the way in a GIS layer and also PD's pulling up their piece on it too. That's gonna be helpful information that tells some of the story. But planning department has where all these projects are going to be, where these applications are. So it's a combination of efforts, but I'm gonna be pushing it from our level and moving the ball forward. We're gonna need your support. And again, our legislative delegation, this is where we bring them in to help us and advocate for the needs that we have here. Our executive counselor is another key player. That's the person who has a lot to do with the ten year highway plan. So John Stevens, we've got to have a, a stronger relationship. I'm used to being able to dial these folks on the phone and say, look, here's what we need. This is what we have. This is what's going on. Let me show you the nature of the problem that we have here. So it, it's gonna be something that we have to push. We cannot sit here and, and hope. And this isn't a complaint against DOT that they'll just solve the problem on their own. They need to hear from us. And we're in a good position to be heard from.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, absolutely, Ted.
Uh, I know it's been a long time since we've had an executive counselor come and actually visit us and give a presentation and hear our concerns. Uh, would it also be worthwhile to have the DOT come in? Because it's been a long time since they presented to us the ten year highway plan and what their vision is for Lundy, because I know they've had projects on the books for Lundy and they just keep on kicking them down the road.
Well, it happens to everybody. Unfortunately, the ten year highway plan ends up being a thirty year highway plan.
Uh, no.
Yeah.
But it might be worthwhile for us to put more pressure if we actually see them in person.
I, I agree and I've done both. Commissioner Cash changed the uh, council meeting up there and the deputy commissioner as well. And our executive counselor was on the city council, which is really helpful. But we need to have something, we need to have a plan to give them. These, this is what we need. Route one oh two, Route twenty eight, Route one twenty eight. We need to be able to advocate to say, these are the projects that we need support in. And when those go to the Southern Hampshire Regional Planning Commission to be scored, we've got to make sure that we have built out enough to score the highest amount of points that we can possibly get. So we've had good success where I was before and being able to do that. With, and that region again, has the least amount of money dedicated to it. There's a lot of money in this region, but it's not going to us. And we need to turn that around.
Of course, go ahead, Dan.
I, I just want to say that everything I heard tonight is so refreshing. And I know I always sound kind of frustrated and angry because everything you've said are things that I've been thinking about and stating for the last, I don't know how many years. The, the vision, the strategy, the being proactive about stuff. I, I just want to applaud you and, and commend you for pulling this all together. I'm so excited to be able to see stuff actually start coming into fruition hopefully. And um, the fact that you want people involved, community input, these are things that I've always been passionate about. Um, and I felt like it, my voice went onto deaf ears all the time. And to hear someone actually say things that I believe in my heart is just such a, a relief and a, and a, and a just, I, I don't even know, anti-stress sort of thing. And I, and I'm sorry, but thank you.
There, there will be stress as Ted indicated. It won't be easy. But we've got it, we've got to launch this effort. We've got to make this case.
I understand.
Otherwise, we're not gonna get anything. And we've got some pretty serious issues that aren't going away.
I.
And it's gonna take a while to get them done. It, to Ted's point as well, quite a while to get it done.
But like six years, six years. I was barking about, we need a water plan, we need a plan, we need a plan, we need a plan. And yeah. As I sat on some of those boards and went to Conquer it and I listened and they said, you need to have shovel ready projects.
Exactly.
And if you don't have the project, we can't give you the money. And you need to at least put something in, but then you can get seventy five percent back. And it was, it was all this information and I would bring it back and I would tell people and it was like, yeah.
You, you gotta lobby. You have to go up there. Up there, we had a, a well project that we wanted fifty percent loan forgiveness, which they don't normally do. We had to go up there and lobby them, DES, to say, look, here's this project. We came up there with all of our data and made our case and, and the value of that particular project. We need to do the same here. We need to go and knock on their door and, and do that. Otherwise, it, the, the money goes to the squeaky wheel of some other community and.
Exactly. Exactly. Thank you. Again, I can't thank you enough because everything I'm hearing is just, makes my heart flutter. Thank you. And don't laugh.
I think, Sean, when you talk about having stuff, you know, shelf ready, shovel ready. Uh, North Fire is a perfect example of that. We were shovel ready and we were able to get federal funds for that. So.
You never know when the money's gonna be available. That's why I talked about in the CIP, you got a six year CIP. The projects that don't fit, you put on an unfunded project list because you can say it's part of our plan. We don't have the funding for these right now, but when grant funds become available, and that's what we used to do, we would grab those. Oh yeah, we got a project ready to go for this and here it is. So that's where we need to get ourselves into that spot.
Excellent.
Thank you. Any other questions? Assistant town manager report.
All set, Mr. Chair.
All right. Public comment? Seeing none?
So I just want to share something. I was up in Lancaster Fairgrounds uh, over the weekend and they had an emergency um, services demonstration. And one thing that really caught my eye was Eversource. Ted, this is probably right up your alley. Okay? Um, they had a demonstration up there uh, telling, educating people about how dangerous it is with those live wires. You know, when they come down near your car and an accident and stuff like that. And I happened to be talking to the guy and I said, oh my goodness. I said, I remember being a young cop, running to the scene when somebody hit a telephone pole, not even thinking. And he was telling me that he has a service, Sean, that Eversource provides where they go to police and fire with the equipment to educate them, to stay safe. Uh, and he said, one of our biggest problems is getting the police over there. But he says, you know, fire, we get over there, we can't get the police. And I'm like, you know, I don't know if there's a way we can try to educate our, our officers or, because I look back and I'm like, yeah, I guess I'm lucky I never got fried, you know? So uh, if we can do anything to protect our employees, that'd be great. Thank you. And I have his number if you want.
Yes, actually, if you could pass that on, because I was a young patrolman one time and I was standing underneath the wires, which was kind of stupid, but I did it anyway, right? Because I wasn't paying attention. They reminded me, hey, you probably should not be there.
Yeah.
Dan, we have a representative for Lundy for Eversource. Um, and I think Sean is connected with Maitri and they can most likely coordinate with that issue. And um, potentially, I think it'd be worthwhile for our fire department to actually have um, some exposure at Scooby Pond at some point as it's the largest substation in the state. But I will try to keep my barrier between Eversource and the town and I'll let you guys handle that piece.
Uh, so Maitri has been wonderful. They've offered um, fires and wires a number of times. Uh, they try to do it locally. They, they, they don't have the resources to do it in each divi, individual fire department for each shift, but they've done it at the um, uh, DOT shed on ninety three and a couple of other locations that we've had people go to as well. So she has been wonderful about presenting that as, to us as well.
Yeah.
So uh, we've, and we've participated in that as well. And I can share Maitri's email with you as well.
Yeah, I've got, I've got her contact. I already met with her, yeah.
Just kidding. With that, I will close public comment. I will accept the motion to go in to a non-public session for a personal matter pursuant to ninety one A colon, dash A colon three comma two C.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And roll call.
All right, Ted Holmes. Aaron Dunn.
I, Dan Bouchard.
I, Deb Paul.
We'll be back.
It's for the public to see now. We're actually gonna have two. There's only one on the agenda. So we're gonna go upstairs. They're not gonna come back down here again. So they'll go out of, they'll go in one, come out and they'll go back in with again. And then we'll, there'll be no public portion, just so you're aware.